Oh, can we turn it down just a little bit, please?
I have to do that. We already set the audio.
I mean, it's echoing.
It won't anymore. It was just that automatic.
Good evening. You're welcome to the Situative Planning Board, uh, Thursday, November 20th. And should I have heard the Situative conversation about the occasion for us and that's how we're all here. Uh, we are waiting for another, um, number. She will be eliminated as Louis, who is purchased by him this evening. We have a post your agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? First of our agenda is a continued public hearing, special permit in Hamarach Village Residential Olae, and we continue to request it to January 22nd through 26th.
I move to accept the applicant's request to continue public hearing for the special permit for South River Marina Development in the Hamarach Village Residential Olae District, 21st Central Avenue and 7 Marshfield Avenue. The applicants, South River Marina Realtor LLC and Union Street Realtor LLC, until January 22nd, 2026, at 6:30 AM, and continue the time for action until April 25th, 2026.
There is a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One whose votes? Yeah. 6:35. We have endorsements at 803 Countryway.
I move to endorse the plans with site plan administrative review and stormwater permit for two multifamily buildings in the village center and neighborhood district, North Situate Village District, Outer Village, VCN, NSBOA, and 799 and 801 Countryway, as conditioned in the decision for the project dated October 3rd, 2025, and modified by vote of the planning board on November 13th, 2025.
There is a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So now we have a modification to a site plan administrative review for ADU 26 Sylvester Road. We've increased the size from 851 square feet to 892 square feet. Will we need any?
Good evening. For the record, Gregory Morris, Registered Engineer, representing the property owner, Paula David Higgins. That was before the board, uh, a couple of months ago, for an ADU 26 Sylvester Road. The board unanimously approved it. Um, since then, the builder that was on that project was a design build firm. Uh, the Higgins have decided to go forward with another builder. Um, and the building changed slightly. It became one foot, two inches wider. It's in the exact same location. Um, it brings the total square footage from 851 square feet to 892 square feet. There are no other site changes. It's two parking spaces, as you originally approved. It's the same septic system. It's the same grading. I submitted a revised plan, and that revised plan shows right here, this wall. Uh, if you can see it in red, the red location was the approved wall. The black is the proposed wall. The village just pumped it two inches wider. But firm, instead of there were any changes, I had to come back to the board. That's why we're here. It implies all aspects.
And why did you decide to change?
They made a, they made a change in the builder. It was a design built team that they had, and they went to a, a separate building.
Any questions, anybody?
Yeah. No, they wanted bigger, you know? It's too bad that people can't, you know, get their, get their stuff organized before they file.
I move to make the following findings, fact, one on November 12th, Paula and Paula J. and David Higgins, through their engineer, Morse Engineering Company, Inc., filed for a modification to the site original unit ADU. Site plan administrative review for ADU detached structure on the property and 26 Sylvester Road, approved by the planning board on October 9th, 2025. The ADU was originally approved at 24 feet wide, and revised ADU is 25.16 feet wide. The building in the same location on the lot was no impact to setbacks. 851 square feet was approved for the ADU, and the ADU is now proposed to be 892 square feet, which is under the size threshold for our protected use ADU, which is by right. Three, based on revised block plan submitted by the applicant, the floor area of the proposed ADU will be approximately 892 square feet, which is 41 square feet bigger than the ADU approved. The principal dwelling is 1818 square feet, according to the applicant's application, which numbers provided by a calculation from the assessor's office for the inside or the exterior wall dimension. This meets the size requirements of 530.1A for the zoning bylaw ADU, as the bylaw allows 50% of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling are 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. Four, findings of fact, 4 through 10 on the planning board decision dated 15, October 15th, 2025, being the same. Five, the attorney general has approved the zoning bylaw. This changes as posted in the bylaw on the town website. I move to approve the minor modification to the site plan administrative review of an ADU at 26 Sylvester Road with the following conditions.
We should probably have a second, but finally.
There is a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I move to approve the minor modification to the site plan administrative review of an ADU at 26 Sylvester Road with the following conditions. One, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions. Any construction shown substantially informed to architectural plans by Nicholas DeVino of the accessory dwelling unit Higgins Residence at 26 Sylvester Road, Situate Mass, dated 10/14/25, consisting of sheet A0.0 cover sheet, A1.1 first floor, and roof plan, A2.1 elevations, A3.1 sections, S1.1 sections framing, SKA dash one first floor plans, area calculation, site and septic plan sheets one and two, and sheet two of two for 26 Sylvester Road, Situate Mass by Morse Engineering Company, Inc., dated 17/25, with revisions to 11 and 12, 2025. Two, all conditions of the ADU approved, October 9th, 2025, and filed with the town court on October 15th, 2025, remain in effect, including this minor modification to be reported at the registry of deeds for our land court.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
I have one question. The, um, all of the reference drawings, these are updated with the new.
Yes, that those are updated when the new, with the new stuff, yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
If we have to vote.
Yeah, we have to vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. About 19th place, a request to eliminate condition 89 of the site plan review for the 40th parish port development, special permit for wrestling and store one permits. We think this word, Mr. Lee.
Oh, wait, wait. I repeat.
Please. Okay. Really, really fun. You're interested in this here? Well, that's something. Really what? Are you still hitting them?
Yeah, don't hit them.
Oh. Close you.
I'm hot off the presses, we do this.
We have always have one of you pass out from that.
Can you identify what you're handing out, please?
Let's see, uh, that book?
Thanks.
Are these the same?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are.
What's going on?
So, uh, we're referring to.
Identify yourself, your background.
Yeah, Paula Burwood, construction manager for Friday the 19th place, Stephen Beach. 58th Road. So we're referring to, um, file for our certificate of occupancy, and, uh, going to special permit, as for the special permit. Uh, we, there are requirements prior to the issue of an occupancy permit in paragraph 89, um, stated prior to application for certificate of occupancy. The applicant shall range for demonstration in the driveway conditions for the building to commission a deputy fire chief, fire chief, and town plan that the installed reinforced grass for the fire access lane hints forth, towns fire equipment. And I went to the fire department, uh, earlier this week to request the beginning test, and he said, they're not going to give that. They're going to put their foot down there, of course, time. They have that written for the department?
All right, we have several emails from the fire department.
I just sent one.
You know, um, we have the first one on, um, from Bob, from Bob Burrowick. Well, the first one on November 12th, okay? And it says that, um, from Pat Riley, the deputy fire chief. I was informed by Bob Burrowick that a written requirement of the permit for 19th place stated the fire department will place its ladder truck on newly constructed grounds to test accessibility in case of an emergency, as outlined in group plans. To clarify, the situative fire department will not be placing its apparatus on grounds for a test. The intent of design was to ensure that emergency access is possible in the event of a fire or similar situation. We only require an ASB plan and documentation verifying that the access area was constructed and engineered to support our aerial apparatus as to. Okay? Um, and then we have an email from Mr. Burrowick telling me what the fire department said. Then we have an email dated Monday, November 17th. As I asked a question, is it not possible? I mean, we weren't, it said fire equipment, so I asked if possibly the ambulance could do the test. Like all our fire apparatus, the ambulance does not leave the paved roadway unless absolutely necessary, such as a life threatening situation. The ambulance structure is on wheels and is easy to maneuver, then taking the vehicle off the pavement. This is done routinely at similar court yard layouts such as Wheeler and Lincoln Parks. The fire department reviewed the site plan forward due by Grady Engineering on 2/24. Deputy Riley also reviewed the plan with Mr. Burrowick when they met at the fire department office in March of 2024. Deputy Riley has requested ASB drawings and a letter from the engineers stating the proposed reinforced grass with built specification. Once received, we will issue a letter of approval of fire department access to 19th place.
And that's what was just handed out here?
No, what you got there is I requested a certification. And so the certification says from the engineer that it was constructed in accordance with the, with the, with the plan. Because we did not observe that portion of the site. Then, late this afternoon, I got an email from deputy chief. I'm not in today, but I've reviewed the provided materials for fire department access as we require as a condition for occupancy, and are satisfied with the building design. No further info or testing is required by situative fire department for access. I would like, if you would like a formal letter, I can send along. But as I know you are reviewing the project tonight, I wanted to email you. I didn't ask for a form. I want that for the file, yeah. I've never heard.
Sounds, sounds good to me. I'd say we're done.
Well, yeah, I would ask the major district, you should fill up what we've tried in contracts.
We did that today.
We did that.
Well, the, the 650s, and there's, I think there's a copy. I'm back in there.
Okay.
This is. Just, um, oh, you drive a truck, huh?
Well, yeah, just, it's a bigger truck than the ambulance. Ambulance would really go 350 size. This is like the 650. So the 650, so you can see that the, uh.
Okay, yeah, but the ambulance, you know, an ambulance can weigh more.
Yeah.
Blood capacity. I mean, this is, this is a pretty beefy truck, but, you know, I'm just, you know, an ambulance weighs more. Obviously, a fire truck weighs more, but.
Like the television.
We asked the question, fire department, they respond, we're done.
We're done. Okay, I mean, you're ready for the most.
Yes. I will treat you condition 89 on special term conditions for 19th place, cottage port development. Fire department has indicated they will not bring these fire equipment, other ambulance to the site to test for the annual hold equipment. Fire chief has indicated that like all fire apparatus, ambulance does not leave a paved roadway unless absolutely necessary. Fire department reviewed the site plan by Grady Engineering on 2/22/24. Fire department has requested an ASB drawing and letter from the engineer stating reinforced grass was built to specification, and will provide a letter of approval for public fire department access for 19th place after the letter is received. The town planner asked for the limits of the H5 5.5 Geo grid under the grass courtyard to be selling, um, as built, and the detail added to the ASB as well as one for the certification that the courtyard was constructed, constructed for the detail. Once the fire department letter is received, and the revised ASB certification, the door will automatically release, condition can be removed, and the planning board is not responsible verification of fire access.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I am.
Thank you. I'm not a cloud.
Yeah.
So you can take it out?
We'll take it out.
Oh, you didn't do the same?
Okay.
All the way.
I'm not getting dressed, too. I'm, yeah.
Thanks a lot, you guys.
Thank you.
Do it well. Well, it's.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. All business, no business. I thought you were here for, because you came with a little aid.
Your name, Paula Higgins.
You're all set.
You're all done. Okay, they filled us 640. Our best.
We went to the town hall, the door was locked.
Yeah, just, yeah.
At least, we don't, we don't refill that yet, though.
You're off.
So does that mean that a building permit will go through?
No, you're, you'll have to file the decision first. You're going to have to record it first, and then your building permit will get signed.
That's it, yeah.
Don't forget the asking.
Yeah.
Just, we've never built a building before, so.
It's the same process as before, so you'll.
So would you have an estimate of, of when we might get the building permit? Time, who is?
Um, I would say it could be December 1st. Okay. What's up? You know, I don't know what Mr. Vogel's schedule is for next week. I'll try to get my part done right away, but, you know, I don't know what his schedule is. And then you got to get it recorded, too.
Yeah. Any, any help you can give us, we would most appreciate it.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Safe drive home.
Right here. Thank you. Now you.
All business, no business.
Right around the.
Do you want to do a few minutes in it? Do first. What do you want to? I'm going there. All right. Well, all right, whatever. No, something different.
I'm just looking at a good minutes. Okay? With the minutes of agenda 13, 2025. So, maybe.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve the following purchase order, number 2604827, in the amount of $2,402.50 for pay review services related to the project and 799-803 Countryway.
Definitely.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now we come to the exciting part of the meeting, which is the zoning bylaws.
All right, and I did not, I sent you out, so. I sent you out some stuff, some, I have, I heard from town council today. Um, so I, I do have some copies, and we can requir, I'll give you copies if you want them. All right, so. We're going to go one at a time, that's for me. Modular dwelling units. Okay, I have this, that become passing down.
The water.
It's, that's it, the modular dwelling units is the same.
Yeah.
And I have the copy?
Sure.
I don't want. All right, so when we were, when we were going back through the ADU stuff, you know, with, um, Bob is really concerned about trailers. And so, you know, we decided to add a definition of modular dwelling unit. And that, of course, they struck out, the AG struck out, no trailers. This is straight from state law. So town council has no problem with this, absolutely straight from state law. So it's very simple.
So this effectively allows trailers?
No, no.
Modular dwellings.
Well, trailer can be set on a foundation. It would effectively.
Yeah, but a regular trailer can't be, a regular trailer in the zoning bylaw cannot be used for a dwelling unit. This one's, this basically says you have to hook up the utilities, and you have to have it on a foundation.
Right. That's what all those creative parts do.
Yeah.
Not what it did.
All right. So that's the first one, okay. Passing down the second one. Second one is Water Resource Protection District. And as you are aware, the Water Resource Commission wanted a change to the bylaw. And so.
I know.
So. I was quite, I was quite leery of the wording that they wanted, um, in 520.2, the reservoir plus any future inland surface water sources. And town council agreed that ideally that should be struck because it's, um, it's evasive, and, you know, it's ambiguous. And so I had a exchange of conversation today with Bruce Arbuthy's, you know, of the Water Resource Commission, and said he has no problem removing that word. I mean, because it's likely the AG would strike it because it's ambiguous. But the other change is perfectly fine, you know, they want to add the buffer right from state, you know, state regs, 400 foot from the high watermark is zone A and 200 from alternative. But. So I think that's pretty easy. Um, I think that one will probably be its own article. Um, and we'll do it at the planning board in conjunction with the Water Resource Commission. With the Water Resource Commission, you can't technically sponsor an article.
Well, okay.
Only certain people can sponsor.
Well, we have to get you to do all the good stuff.
Okay.
There's no special.
I think it's a, I think it's a good, I think it's a good change.
Absolutely.
Is there a reason they struck out the specific tack, tack factory on the reservoir? Which must have existed before?
In 540.4, the buffer zone.
It's, it's, I'd say it's, they stuck, they struck out tack factory pond because they're saying from the high watermark of the surface water sources outlined in 520.8. So, um, in A, you have Olukemuket Pond, Tac Track, Three Pond, and the reservoir. All three of them are Class A.
So this is extending the protection district to all of these locations?
Well, it technically.
Rather than tack factory pond.
It technically already is because it's state law.
Saying this word is what's.
Yeah, this wording is.
Is what this is built.
Right. So I think it's a good, it's a good change. This came about, if you recall, because of 18 to 20 Countryway. Mr. Morris doesn't believe that he has to meet certain requirements. But no, that's a, that's a topic for a different day. All right?
So just the, I'm just trying to, the language here, right? So we've now said 400 feet horizontally from the high watermark of the surface water sources identified above. 200 feet horizontally from the edge of all tributaries in the reservoir, shouldn't it be in the watersheds of the, um, of the water sources identified above? Or is this just the reservoir? See what I'm saying?
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Um, I can double check with, can you just tell me your wording again?
It says from the edge of all tributaries in the surface water sources outlined in 520.2A above.
No, that's not correct.
Okay.
Okay, because.
In the watersheds, I'm sorry, in the watersheds or the surface water sources outlined above, right?
No.
Because we're finally doing the last sentence.
The water sources have tack factory pond, Olukemuket Pond, and the reservoir have 400 feet. If you have a stream.
No, the, the, the specific, the specific surfaces have 400 feet.
Right.
The watersheds, right? The watershed is leading into those.
Yeah.
Is what has the 200 feet.
Right, right, right.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. So the tributaries into the watershed or all of the surface water sources outlined in 520A above. I think the way it's written now is just referring to the reservoir.
All right, I will, I will talk to Bruce again.
Okay.
Okay. The next one is a modification to section, um, 620.4, okay? This has come about as a result of, we have a couple of instances where you have ADUs on second floors, and you have stairways and decks from them that go all the way to the property. Okay? And so we've had several complaints about some of those projects. And so we're trying to put in language that says you can only go 18 inches into the setback. Basically, at grade, at grade construction, such as patios, driveways, walkways, pool decks, and other height, decks of height nowhere than 12 inches above the average to ramp in grade should be allowed to extend to the property line. So that's, you know, basically flat. Then decks over 12 inches above grade, including balconies, stairways, and landings, shall meet the requirements of the preceding paragraph. Rebuilding, repair, or extension of preexisting decks, balconies, stairs, and landings shall not be allowed to create a nonconformity or not exist, and should not be allowed to increase their nonconformity where one exists. So in the preceding paragraph, nothing herein shall prevent the projection of corners or eaves not exceeding 18 inches in width. So they can go into the setback by 18 inches, but they can't go to the property line.
So today, where the things that are, quote unquote, at grade, are 12 inches or less. What can they do?
They can go to the property line.
They can.
Yeah, they can go to the property line with anything right now. And so we're trying to.
I think that's right, under setbacks.
Not stairs, not for stairs and decks.
Not anything, because they're not a hug, they're not covered.
Right, they're not covered. So they can go, so we're.
Certain things seem okay, and other things seem like if somebody paved a deck all the way to their property line.
Well, we have instances where we've had complaints because the stairs and the deck is going essentially to the property line. And we're trying to correct.
So this isn't correcting that?
Yes, it, uh.
Not the patios, the driveways, the walkways?
That's all the 12 inches. We're, we're saying the 12, if it's below 12 inches, you can still do that because the neighbor next door is really not going to see it. But if you have.
It's on the second floor.
Over 12 inches, then it's, you know, you have to.
So, okay, I get that, but so the neighbor doesn't have anything in the house, it's a lawn. He decides to put a 20 by 20 deck in all the way to the property line. Who manages the water runoff from that deck?
It goes, it's, it should infiltrate into the ground below because the deck is.
It will go to their neighbors. I'm talking about at grade, patio.
Okay, okay. Well, what would you like it to say? I can.
Really matter because if they put in a huge deck, whether it's in the back of the house, no matter what the size of the deck.
I'm talking about at grade, not, not anything else.
No, I get that, but you're saying let's just say it's in the back of the house. I say it's 20 by 20 and it hits, hits the property line. And water can't get through, but even if it's in the back where it's within, it will still affect the neighbors. You know what I'm saying?
Well, all I'm saying is this, this is mine. And you build the deck right to there, it's all draining into my yard. Right?
That's true.
That, that's, that's the one sort of provision.
I know, you can build it in your backyard and it's, you should see the neighbors now. I don't know, they took down trees, they were more. Underwater. Rain is still going through though, if they didn't put a deck, they just, they just relandscaped, that's not right.
Well, they changed the, the pervious surface, is what they changed. Yeah, they cut all the trees down and everything.
That's a different story.
I'm not talking about landscaping, I'm really talking more about landscapes because those are impervious, right? I don't know, I mean, if it's already allowed, then I guess there's no sense changing it.
I mean, it's allowed right now. We were trying to, what we were trying to address is the stuff.
On the second floor.
On the second, on the second floor. But if, you know, think about it.
I'm fine with the stuff on the second floor, it's, it seems like, you know, stuff at grade has impacts as well.
So do you not want that to extend to the property line? You want that to extend only 18 inches?
I thought, I didn't think it ever did, so if it does.
It does.
I know that, that we can change that.
Just for ADUs houses too.
As for houses, yes.
So somebody decided they want to put a driveway in, run it right up to my property line, they can do that. I think there should be some way to manage the drainage so that doesn't fit my property.
I agree with you.
I don't know, it's this paragraph, I mean, that addresses that, but I mean, yeah, you know, I'm open to any suggestions, that's, the building commissioner.
Is this, is this language somewhere else in the document?
No.
No, it's just in firm.
It's just in, yeah. I mean, we have stormwater.
There's still a lot of people who sit and think about it, I guess.
Well, I, I think what's happening is that several ADUs have come in with second floor going directly to the property line, from the next door, it's a right, much harder to get across.
And that would be a definitely service, right?
Yeah.
That would be the stuff of 12 inches, right?
Right, that would be the stuff above.
Which, I, I, I agree with you. You shouldn't run stairs right to the property line.
That's allowed right now. I mean, so if you want.
I was just extending my thought that I wouldn't want somebody to build driveway or patio. Particularly mostly for just runoff, right? You know, there's also right up the property too, so I must be issue.
And that's why we tried to put a dimension in the revised stormwater regulations, you know, that we didn't want stormwater structures, you know, within 10 feet of the property line so that, you know, your neighbor doesn't get, you know, washed out or, or impacted.
So is it possible to modify that first sentence?
Yeah.
And to say, provided that drainage from such structures shall drain onto the same property or onto property owners? In other words, okay, you're going to put a deck in, then put a, you know, put a slight slump to it, right? So the drains to your property, not to your neighbor's property.
So provided that drainage from such property does not leave the property. Okay? I will run that through the building commissioner and town council again.
Yep.
I mean, it seems like we're, we're catching a whole bunch of things from, not necessarily from ADUs, but some of the cleanup that we're doing is resulting from MBPA 2 and from some of the stuff that we're having problems with as a result of ADUs.
Yep.
Okay, the next one. Setbacks. Okay? 620.3. Okay? So, under the ADU bylaw, you're basically, not under the, in the ADU bylaw, but under the ADUs, you're allowed, you're supposed to have to allow the least permissive setback. Okay? Least permissive that you have in your zoning bylaw. So under, under the zoning bylaw, we have setback and yard requirements. We have, you know, the front yard for all the districts is 30 feet. So that's good. And then 620.3 has, breaks it down into R1 and R2, R3, and B. And it has a side yard and a rear yard. Okay? Side yard for R1 and R2 is 15 feet, R3, 8 feet. We have required rear yard. Well, right now, this allows 8 feet for one-story detached accessory buildings. Okay? So theoretically, you could have in the R1 district an accessory dwelling, a two-story ADU, 8 feet from the property line.
That's terrible.
Well, that's theoretically what you can do.
That's what Karen was saying.
This does one story.
I know, but it doesn't matter, Steve, that the state is saying it doesn't matter. So we're trying to come up with something that will attempt to fix it. And so we want to change R1 and R2 to 15 feet.
I'm not sure that works. I, I think the 8 feet was really designed primarily to allow sheds and stuff like that.
I know, but they don't, they don't care, they don't care.
Yeah, but so what, right? I mean, so they don't care. So do we say that now we make it more difficult for people to put sheds where they want on their property?
This is for accessory buildings, it's, I'm.
Right.
Livable.
That's an accessory building.
A shed is an accessory building.
Well, I don't want it to ride on the property.
It doesn't say accessory dwelling.
I mean, so.
Well, that's, that's for R3, right?
I mean, so I have not had the conversation with town council about this. I proposed two options, okay?
Can we say, can we say 8 feet for accessory unoccupied?
No, 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 you can't do that because that was my second option, Steve. I was trying, my second option, but town council says no go. 8 feet for one-story detached accessory buildings not used for human occupancy. And town council. For section 620.
Can we say for occupied by squirrel zone?
For, for section 620.3, we don't think option two is going to get you what you want, which is to limit ADU setbacks. We think it's option one or nothing, but happy to discuss. So I just got this like at 12:30 today. I did not discuss it with town council, but, you know, so option two is off the table because I tried to say for human occupancy, thinking that that would solve the problem and they say no go. And I got a feeling they were going to say that, but you know.
Well, this is kind of like the lesser, picking the lesser two evils, is what you're saying.
Yes.
And the question is, from, this will go to town, both, right? But from town's perspective, would you rather preserve the 8 foot to preserve the ability for, you know, outbuildings that close? Or do you want to be more restricted because of the accessory dwelling?
Well, certain sheds don't need building permits either, so if they don't need a building permit.
Well, they're smaller than a certain size.
Right, I believe Bob told me 200 square feet. So that's what he told me.
I thought it was 100 foot.
I thought it was 100 too, but I, you know, I didn't argue. And so this, this came about because we have an issue. You're going to be seeing an accessory dwelling coming in that is going to be 8 feet from this property line and it's going to be two stories. Actually, it's going to be.
I guess I would say that, you know, if you think that's going to continue to be the case, then we propose 15 and explain it that way, right? Is that it's going to be restrictive on other kinds of, on other kinds of outbuildings, right? But it's, on the whole, it preserves, you know, at least limits how close.
In the R1 and R2.
Why aren't we good in the R3?
R3, your required side yard is already at 8 feet, your required rear yard.
The R3 is small.
R3 is a smaller loss, but yet this is where we're seeing a lot of ADUs coming. I mean, and, you know, you know, we're getting no less than probably three inquiries about ADUs every week.
Well, I guess if it's good for R1 and R2, why isn't it good for R3?
No, because R3 was already different.
Yeah, I know, but the same, the issue however, that we say we're trying to address is the same.
Yeah, the issue is the same.
So I, I just don't think you can say we can have a house at a setback of 8 feet, but in our grade, but then accessory dwelling has to be 15.
No, a house.
No, these are setbacks, right?
A house right now, right now, for rear yard is supposed to have 20 feet. But you have. You have a lot of pre-existing non-conforming, which are, you know, a big part of your R3 district.
So they're pre-existing non-conforming, someone's putting an ADU that makes it more non-conforming?
No. Not necessarily, not if they, you know, that's not how ours CBA interprets it. I mean, if they need the setbacks, then they don't care how much percent increase there is. You, I mean, you, if you looked at the number of things the CBA is approving that are 300% bigger, you would be shocked.
Just go down. Is it?
Second quarter.
V B D M, V B D M from Hazel? Down to the lights.
Well, yours had to go to second quarter in general. So you want to, I mean, you get the problem we're trying to address. I mean, I'm all open if you guys think of any other way to address this.
There really isn't another way. It's either 15 feet for one story, it's, I think that that's more than adequate.
But you know it's going to be extended if they're doing an ADU to two, to two stories. And we can't get around that because of the state law.
Well, then our hands are tied.
Yeah, our hands are tied.
If we can keep it at 15 for one story and they're going up and it's still 15 feet rather than 8, I don't think, it's just everybody's going to be smooshed in together.
Yes, everybody's going to be smooshed in together. That's what our country wants is right, I mean, that's what the state wants.
The state wants, we don't have to pay for extra empty rooms, so we're all good. That's what countries do. Again, I'm going to state again, this was designed for gateway cities and up to every room. City time, yeah, what, around the state. They took the selection of our carriage.
So if you have any suggestions, I'm certainly open to them. I mean, we, our schedule, we still have some more to go through, but our schedule is we're having the zoning workshop on December 11. And we're having our zoning public hearing on January 8. I've already let them know, we are not complying with their deadline of having zoning all final wording in December because it doesn't work. Because when you, when you do, when you do anything like that in December, the public will perceive that you're trying to pull a fast one. We're not trying to pull any fast one, we're, we're open and we're open about this whole thing. Alright. The next one is contiguous lot hearing.
Oh, didn't we do this once?
Yeah, wait. I don't know if we did it last time. But, so the building commissioner thinks the bylaw is bad.
Oh, come on, he's bad.
You guys? So I'm adding in the section, section A, another sentence to say, oh, required lot area must be contiguous.
Absolutely.
And so we already said it in B, we said all buildable lot area must be contiguous. Town council thinks I shouldn't have it as required. Yes.
That enters the table, right?
So it's a simple housekeeping change, but, you know, it's, it's an important change.
I would, I would make sure that that language, those are capitalized terms. Required lot area, because that's the font above.
Okay.
You can't have a 10 feet here and 30 feet over there to say that you have a total of how many feet?
Right.
And they're trying to do that.
Yeah, I know they have done it and we tried, and I know that, I know another lot that somebody I think is going to try and do. So, but so I think this is just, again, some general housekeeping cleanup.
You know, so much of this is common sense.
Right, but if it's not written or written out, you don't have that, so I have. Alright, the next one is the table of uses. The nightmare. Alright, so.
The distance where the wording is all dashed, the chart, right?
I sent, here's an extra, I have another one, it's the same thing. Alright, so I sent, I sent it, I sent it around once and then I sent it around a second time. So it should have a two.
Yeah, two, right.
A two, you have a two on.
Are we moving that bolt or just two?
Just two. Just two.
Okay.
We'll get to the other one in a minute. So we started going through this as a result of ADU and I realized that, you know, the table was incorrect. So accessory dwelling subject to 530, it's supposed to be, yes, it's supposed to have a Y special permit because you can have ADUs by right now. And so that's the same for the commercial district. So going back up to single-family detached dwelling. Single-family detached dwelling, it says it's allowed in the DBP. It was, it was never intended to be allowed in the DBP. Okay? That's the, that's the area where we zone, where it was commercial part of the VCN. Okay, so it was never really intended.
DBP is.
Driveway business part, so that should be known. So that's where, you know, Hoffman is and it extends a little bit down Stockbridge Road. Okay, then the next line, number B, two-family subject to 430, and we have to say and VCN. Then we have to change N R N to yes. But in our building types, you know, you have uses and building types. In our building types, we have a different requirement for a two-family dwelling. And so, yes, we do, it's not double the lot area in the VCN. So that's why we have to clean that.
What's the N R N?
North River Neighborhood, that's where you have James Landing and. James Landing and, um, the, the, the Riverway down, down there. Okay, then going to line M, childcare facilities. You can't not allow childcare facilities, they have to be allowed in every district. It's one of those things, so we have to change the table for that. Living work building, we have it as yes, and it's not, it, it, it's not allowed in the, um, it should be not allowed in the N R N. And mixed-use building, technically, you can do a mixed-use building in the harbor under the Village Business Overlay District. So that should be special permit there. And it should be no in N R N. Um, so that's an attempt at the cleanup of the table to, to match some of the changes that were done as a result of M V T A and ADUs, which we've never really did the table, and some just general housekeeping, um, because, you know, childcare is allowed everywhere. Not that anybody would want, but within the N R N, uh, or down there, but you know, it is the law. So then we need to go to the. That's G W B. Then we need to go to the, um, the table of, um, building types. We need to change, it says a cottage court is allowed in the N D T D. Well, that's our mandatory mixed-use district, part of our M V T A district, so we don't want a cottage court there.
We don't want that either.
Yeah, I'm not going to think we don't want it anywhere either. But so we need to.
There are a lot of work.
Yeah, so what?
We put, we put a man, yeah.
I, I think that, I think that you have to start. I, I don't think, I think you need the right site for cottage court. And I think that the one on nineteen four place got a lot of waivers. And I think the board needs to seriously look at the waivers.
It's too big and small.
That's my thing.
It's too big and too small a lot.
All right.
Let me give you a call.
It's fine. I think it's fine.
And the last one we talked about before was building height.
Project take, it was four years ago, didn't work.
So, how was tricky how you worded it, what are we doing this now? What's, what's being done in practice? The definition of building height goes to probably average grade to like the midpoint of the gable on a gable roof. Okay, so in the residential district, they're basically saying your, your height is thirty-five feet, like, I mean, it's thirty-five feet to a flat roof, but to a gable, it's to the midpoint. And they're saying, the zoning bylaw says you can go up five more feet from the midpoint of the gable to the top of the ridge. So we're just.
That's in the bylaw, aren't we?
It is in the bylaw, uh, if you look under, at the last paragraph on that page. So it was, was here, um, it says it somewhere, I thought it already, no, that's not the right paragraph, um, I'll find it for you for next time. But it already said, basically says it, um, in the bylaw, right now, that you could go, you can have that five feet. So I'm just trying to clarify it, because there's confusion. You know, your, your table in the V C N says forty feet max. Well, but, and so the argument has been, well, building height is calculated from average grade to the, to the, um, midpoint, so therefore that's your height. So if we go forty feet there, that's the max. Not, you know, not, you can interpret it, I think that you can't do that, and you could, forty feet is forty feet. This is just clarifying what we've been doing on projects.
And we're running to this, like, driveway.
We run into it to a lot of places. And.
Why, why is this one forty-five feet then?
Because you're, it's, it's adding five more feet to the allowed height.
Only in the gable.
Only on a gable, a gable, mansard and, um, hip.
Oh, it's forty feet for. The other, I should.
So in the previous paragraph, notwithstanding the regulation of building height in section, in section six twenty-three, five, and loud height projections in six twenty-two, no building with gable, hip, or a gable roof in R one, R two, R three shall exceed forty feet. So it already tells you down there that in a residential, in the R one, two, three, you can go, you know, at the heights thirty-five, but you, it can't exceed forty feet. It tells you in that paragraph there. So we're just trying to clarify it for the, um, you know, in the business and V C N.
So, um, adding the, with a maximum height of forty feet to the ridge is duplicative of that paragraph alone. Doesn't it say?
That's for.
Matter of finish grain.
That's for R one, R two, and R three.
Yeah.
This is, this is forty-five.
Yeah, but I don't see the end of the sentence, is that same language in this sentence? This paragraph? Rolls on to the next page. It seems, it seems like the R one, two, and three are already really clear.
It is, but I was trying to make it, you know, um, I was trying to make it totally clear. I agree with you, it, it's clear to me.
It's the highest point of any roof.
It's not clear to other people.
It's not clear to, it's not clear to some other people. So.
That's because they're trying to interpret it differently.
Yes, so.
Should they have anything?
Right, so this is.
It shouldn't, this, so it says forty feet to the ridge. Should that say to the highest point of the roof? It's.
I can change.
It's kind of, it's already what it says here, right?
Yeah, it's, all right, I'll change the. I'll change that.
Does that, um, include things like what does wash and stuff?
No, because, I mean, cupolas, pink, cupolas, that kind of stuff is already excluded.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a separate paragraph, um, in the bylaw on that. And that's, um, nothing hearing shall prevent the projection of, um, no, that's not the right one, um. Cupolas and that stuff is exempt. Chimneys, spires, towers, and other projections not used for human occupancy may be constructed above height limitations.
You know, if you wanted to be really clear, when you say highest point of any roof, you could put a parenz and say E G, ridge line.
Okay. All right. So then I will make these changes for the workshop on December eleventh. So this is all, these are all the zoning changes I was projecting for the annual town meeting. We are in the process right now, I got the first draft yesterday, and we have to meet on it, of the stormwater bylaw. So we will, you know, so the, this, the workshop this year will be a bylaw workshop. So we have general by, the general bylaw of stormwater and the, um, and zoning bylaws. We'll do zoning first and then do general. And so I've suggested to the bylaw review committee, they may want to come to our workshop. I think they think we're, we're going to go to them, we're going to meet at the same time, and I've suggested they might want to come and listen to, um, the presentation. They have to have an opinion on it. They don't have to have, they don't have to have an opinion on zoning, that's not what the bylaw committee was done. Um, for, it was for general bylaws. And stormwater is a general bylaw, and our professional paid consultant is working on that. The, the people who are, who do the town's M S four permit, where's the.
They don't have the, have that opportunity to have an opinion.
Yes, they have.
Can't you not give us one?
Right.
Right.
But they will make a recommendation, this, this group will make a recommendation.
Three points.
So I miss, you know, so I have to allow a little bit of extra time in all this stuff, but you know, things are very tight from our timeline right now. So you won't see stormwater until right before, you know, before the meeting on the left. But I will clean all this up and, you know, coordinate with whoever I need to coordinate. I mean, there's nothing, no other bylaws that the board wanted to work on either. I mean, because.
I don't, we just had one clean this stuff up.
I think we want, I think we need to clean off stuff. And it's really just housekeeping.
Yeah, it's, yes.
Branch legal select board, um, are these all going to be individual articles going on individually at town meeting? So there's like, either them here or.
No, I don't, I don't think so. I, I haven't, we haven't worked that out yet. I've put placeholders in for four. I thought that the Water Resource Protection District would be on its own. I thought section six hundred would be its own zone, table of uses would be on its own, um, maybe table of uses and building types can be one. Um, I haven't approached that, how it's going to be laid out totally with town council, but my thought was four articles, not individual, not individual articles. The problem is, I'm going to tell you right now, the problem is the votes. A D U stuff is a majority vote, other stuff is a two-thirds. I would like to go for two-thirds vote on everything. I don't want to separate the A D U line and the table. I mean, it just makes no sense. We did it that way before with M V T A, M V T A stuff only had to be majority too. I just, I think it, you know, let's try for, you know, let's try for majority. But we'll, I'll review that again with town council. It would be too many articles, and of course, stormwater has to be its own article.
Do you have any idea how long the board is going to be right now?
I have no idea now.
Um, it's, it's fairly long.
Fairly long, two nights, two nights.
No, I mean, if people understand all the zoning, the zoning will go quickly.
And you're sitting here listening, you'll laugh against us, okay?
Unless you bring up something on like height of buildings. Definitely people will be confused and then all that happens.
Take your time, I understand.
Yeah.
But we may anticipate.
I mean, so it, but it, as, it's pretty straightforward. I mean, unless we wanted to try and do it as one article, except for water resource protection is housekeeping. But I don't, I think we would scare them, and I don't want to do that.
I think if there's some stuff like that, people think we're trying to pull something off.
Yeah, I, I do too, I think so, this is just being, I've asked for four articles right now.
So obviously not easy stuff, so we try to make it as delectable and plausible to the public, funny talk. So it is, and you can push it off to get the people like I can do with something, but all of a sudden, but I have twenty-five, so skyscraper, the harbor, people don't pay attention.
Yeah, well, we're not.
But I'm just saying, people think that kind of stuff.
Haven't done anything with the harbors.
No, they don't, we've got to wash it away, then we're not going to work on that.
Okay, all right. So I have been trying to get the schedule so that you don't have anything else on the public hearing night for the zoning or the workshop night, because you guys all kind of need to focus on what, what these articles are. That's still the preferred method. Okay.
Do we know what time it is?
April thirteenth.
See you for the.
I have to go on December ninth to review just the budget for planning to the select board.
You're going to give us any more money, they're going to like, whoop.
No, they're not going to give us any more budget. Yes, technically, the director of planning and development, um, that money is being not funded this year.
Which they do watch. Just said.
It's, no, it went to other things. And it's going to other things this year, the budget is very, very tight this year. But what, I mean, nothing was cut from our other stuff, you know, so, um, but just the director of planning.
And we went to, we're not, it, it happens that shit, it's child to others. That's just true, I mean, when it gets, they got a lawsuit, we get started, sort of, advisory boards, something to write on the news. Um, they don't have such a trouble. So it's looking for another override, right?
I don't know, but I mean, that's the way it is right now, so, you know, um, you know. So that, that's the zoning.
Joy of wrenching.
Yeah.
We will make. Yeah, we'll take you. Good, you work as hard as you do. You don't regret your actions.
You know, because we get questions, some of this stuff hasn't been caught until now because, you know, you get a question from a, an appraiser, well, you know, well, this is vague, well, then it's not allowed. I mean, and so, you know, they, they don't want to believe you. Um, you know, a lot of stuff lately is they don't want to believe us, you know, nineteen four, I'm going to pick on them again, you know, we told them, they had them inspections for the geo grid and for the chop coat. Oh, you didn't tell us that. Oh, yes, we did. Well, did they do it? No. Well, I mean, we, the binder was inspected, but, you know. So people are kind of doing a little bit of what they want and asking for forgiveness all the time.
Like I seen, he took a pretty short, it's, oh, well, Facebook content.
Well.
It's not me. People drive by, you can just repair, what are they going to do with it? What's that I was doing?
It's only two, I was told by the assessors, it's only two years in careers with the taxes, so they're not making a move on it.
Must be all done.
Right, but it's only, it's only two years.
And she's not going to do a lot of foreclosure.
We're not doing foreclosure.
She's not going to do a lot because the town only gets the money that's owed to it. The assessor has, the treasurer collector has done awful lot of work to get it, you know, foreclosure, and then the other people get all the rest of the money back. We used to get all, we used to get all.
But that's not quite right.
But I mean, so if the town, but, but the town has, town has done a lot.
I know, but there should be a state, there's, the stage we've surveyed, did it, somebody should be able to sell it, do the, anyone selling it, that's a natural house.
Well, it's a good moment to record, it's the spoils.
This is being contested.
I don't know the status of it, I mean.
What was the person's name, I'll look him up tomorrow.
Tom?
Um, Bob.
Yeah, we know.
Newsom. Newsom.
Bob Newsom. You know what, I'll look up the assessors, then I can put them perfect.
There you go. Rebecca's on him.
All right.
Are you thinking for my shot robotol?
What?
That's what? No, they would never know.
Well, I mean, they have to know, they're going to leave this issue, right? Because everything would have just come to her. People need to get a right on it.
Yeah, we have to enjoy this. So, well, we should go, so, um, the way it is on your, I have to say, is, I mean, that ridge actually from conservation has been structured December, which is country, countryway.
And they're going to ask for an extension of the December meeting to, for, for planning. I found out today, eighteen to twenty countryway, that we continue to December eighteen, then, then that's not going to come back to you to February now.
Oh, okay, well, they, they said the conservation should be December fifteenth. Yeah, well, and, okay, they have a lot of work to do. We will buy the scale too.
Are they going to do an archaeological thing?
They're not, they're not going to be required to, we may, we have, have to debate whether we condition it. They don't have to do it unless there's a state permit involved. So the probable state permit would be if somebody appealed the order of conditions. I mean, that's the one that gets people the most. But, you know, they don't have any other state permit that they need.
Unless they start, you can go buy a book. Or we go, yeah, okay, yeah.
So I'm going to hope that nothing is going to come, and we can potentially cancel the December eighteenth.
Okay, that is gross.
Yes.
Right, everybody else, everybody, yeah?
What's the motion? Bell's motion.
Bell's motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, speaking of which, I did, we saw a part of the, we have your service.
We're officially adjourned.
We're officially adjourned, thank you, sir.